Mr. Rosales, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, Establishment of Court.
Rene Rodriguez.
Here.
Maria Reyes.
Here.
Ralph Duran.
Here.
Mayor Elian Garcia.
Here.
Victor Perez.
Here.
And Ivan Colombia-Lopez.
Here.
Mayor, we have a court. We have two speakers for public comment. Miriam Cruz. Ms. Cruz, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council, Mayor. One thing I wanted to talk about or address was, and this is probably the fourth or fifth time that I talk about this at a city council meeting or that I talk about in a public comment, speeding on Stockyard with the new subdivision that's opened up in Sierra Sur. You know, it's been an issue, it continues to be an issue. And I think that's something that really needs to be looked into before or during the process of allowing new subdivisions to be built. Because once that street was opened, I mean, cars were coming in and out. And there was no, there isn't even lighting, like, lights in the streets, there wasn't any lighting, but yet cars were coming through. Speeding is rampant, and my problem is, I'm gonna talk to Ms. Lart, I'm gonna talk to Mr. Rosas. Ms. Reyes might, we might be coming together, try to figure out a solution this next week. But the problem is that cars are already used to speeding through there. So any solution that we make, or anything that we try to go, it's gonna take them a while for them to actually start getting used to, whether it's a stop sign, a dip, a hump, whatever it is that we might be. Anyway, my suggestion is, when we're allowing subdivisions to get built, the safety of the current neighborhoods and of the neighbors needs to really be looked at. There's no kids at my house, and my house is the one at the end. But there's kids all around the neighborhood that are coming down to try to go around, go to the park, that's in the county side. That's an issue. It's a blind spot. Cars are coming in, speeding through. The stop sign right in front of my house is, people don't stop at it because you can't see, because they have to go a little bit farther up to actually be able to see if anyone's coming. And usually, they don't stop. Why? Because my car, it used to be a dead end. They didn't have to stop. So my problem is, you know, repetition habits. People get into that habit of not having to look because it used to be a dead end. Well, now they do have to look, but they're not looking. Anyway, so the issue is, let's try to address it early on, all the time, so that, it's been more than a year now, since that street's been opened up, probably? Probably? I don't know. Probably, right? And so speeders are still going through, including some police officers, and some sheriffs as well, and some of our own police PD that I've seen, because I'm sitting outside my house and I see them, and I'm like, "What are you doing? Like, you're supposed to be stopping the speeders." Anyway, so that's something we should look into, and look at all the time in all subdivisions. The second thing is, the East Lake Street, level old cycle tanks, I saw the recording online. I'll be really brief with this. I think it does matter if it's gonna cost us money. I like the name, that name should've been the name since to begin with. I was here at the first city council meeting when we were discussing what to call it, and I wanted to raise my hand and jump up and be like, "Why are you calling it East Lake? Don't do that."
Ms. Cruz, your time is up.
Let's be methodical, and let's think about it in the head, so we're not spending money or wasting money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniela Hernandez. Mr. Hernandez, you have three minutes.
Yes. My name is Daniel Hernandez. I just here to speak about what's happening here in Socorro with our streets. I know we're doing relays, I know we are, you know, but our streets are only getting higher. So in the future, whenever we're gonna get some sidewalks or stuff like that, we're gonna have water problems again. So I mean, let's, like I said, if we're gonna waste money now, let's go ahead and do it right the first time, instead of, you know, us tripping with the same rock. We're doing the same thing, we're just beautifying it, yes, relaying them. I know sometimes they don't have money. But whenever they're gonna put those sidewalks in, then we're gonna have water problems. So like I say, maybe we should go back and see what's going on, what's the best option? To see what we're gonna do, you know, less streets, we're doing right, instead of us having problems in the future. And second of all is that, council here, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I truly don't appreciate people when they're telling us, when we donate our time for Socorro, for zoning and planning, that Mr. Renee here says that, "We don't know what are we doing." You know, I think he should, I wonder if he has the courage to go to one of our meetings and tell it in our face. I mean, but it's freedom of speech, I do agree on that. Sometimes I don't know if he actually knows what he's doing or voting, but at least I'm here and I can tell it to his face. Thank you.
Mayor, those were all our speakers.
Mayor, just so that our city clerk can write it down, it's not overlays. It's overlays, not what he said.
Relays.
Yes. Because he says relays, and relay is for track. So just, that should show you about how commissions work.
Mr. Duran.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to please move the following items to the beginning of the meeting. Item number 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 18, and 19, in that order, please.
22. Through what?
22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 18, and 19.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lopez.
Yes.
Item number 22, Discussion and Action to Appoint Jorge Estrada to the Civil Service Commission, Play Six.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Maria Reyes.
Stay.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lopez.
Yes.
Item number 23, Discussion and Action to Appoint Ruben Garcia to the Civil Service Commission, Play Seven.
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Duran.
We need to be recognized before we make any motions. I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 23, Discussion and Action to Appoint Ruben Garcia to the Civil Service Commission, Play Seven.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Maria Reyes.
Stay.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lopez.
Yes.
Item number 24, Discussion and Action to Appoint Ruben Garcia to the Ethics Commission, Play Six. Mr. Duran.
Motion to approve, discussion, or to approve Ruben Garcia to the Ethics Commission, Play Six.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Maria Reyes.
Stay.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lopez.
Yes.
Item number 25, Discussion and Action to Appoint Howard Capshaw to the Ethics Review Commission, Play Seven.
Mr. Duran.
Motion to approve the appointment of Howard Capshaw to Ethics Commission Review, or Ethics Review Commission, Play Seven.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Maria Reyes.
Stay.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lopez.
Yes.
Item number 26, Swearing In of Newly Appointed Commissioners.
Are they here? Yes. So you just want one feeling, I didn't just say, yeah. Just one sec. Just one sec. Yes. Yes, I have a little problem. Mayor.
Item number 18, Discussion and Action to Approve the First Amendment to Contract for Professional Services with Delgado Acosta, Spencer, Linebarger, and Perez LLP for Delinquent Account Collection Services and to authorize the Acting City Manager of her Designee to execute the services agreement and other documents necessary to engage the company as of October 12, 2017. Mr. Perez.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Presentation.
Do we have a presentation?
We're just amending, we're just renewing the contract that we did last year for the collections of the warrants. But we do have staff here in case you all have any questions regarding the warrant collections.
Just very briefly, what did the, I'm sorry.
Mr. Perez.
What did the amendment entail?
Well, it's not an amendment, it's just a renewal. Every year, we have to go through a renewal.
So why is it called the First Amendment?
To approve the first amendment contract. Did we amend anything? Yes.
Yeah, but maybe the amendment is going to add to the existing contract just for the purposes of extending the contract for another period.
Oh, and the amendment was, is that the contract ended on October the 12th. So we're wanting to backdate it to October 12th, so we wouldn't lose break in service.
Okay. And just for the record, my name is Jose Padilla, I'm one of the partners with the law.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lopez.
Yes.
Item number 19, Discussion and Action of Approval of Inner Local Agreement by and between the City of Apaso Department of Public Health and Department of Environmental Services and the City of Socorro, Texas for the period of September 1st, 2017 through August 31st, 2018, in the amount of $275,894. Mr. Perez.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any speakers?
This is one of the things that we need, we have to have in place.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lopez.
Yes.
Moving back to Consent Agenda, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Consent Agenda.
Mr. Perez.
Second.
Mr. Duran.
I do have one question on the accounts payable. It is used, let me get my thing. There's no page number, but it is, it was a check written on 9/1 of 2017 to Safety Clean Systems. It says, "Used Oil Pickup." It was for $1,145.83. I realize we generate used oil, but there is a company that will pay us for that used oil. And I think we need to investigate that so that we can get some money for that used oil, instead of paying somebody to take it away. If you want, I can get with the city manager later on and...
What page, what page was it?
There's no page numbers. It's on the...
It's on the bottom.
Accounts payable. About the middle.
And what's the name of the...
Safety Clean Systems.
We're not posted for that.
I'm just saying, it's, this is something that I'm...
We can move it to the regular agenda if you want to discuss it.
Okay. Well, I mean, just for thought.
What, can you tell me which page? I know it doesn't have a number, but you count up for us? You're the first?
Easier.
And the motion was made by... Mr. Perez. Mr. Duran, second, and by Renee. Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lopez.
No.
Item number nine, Introduction, First Reading, and Calling for a Public Hearing of an Ordinance to Establish Safety Zone on Alameda Avenue to Prohibit Parking on the Public Right-of-Way, Including but Not Limited to the Shoulder, Sidewalks, Paintings, or Other Public Driveways. Mr. Rodriguez.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Maria Reyes.
I approve with the conditions that are stipulated on there.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lopez.
Yes.
Item number 10, Introduction, First Reading, and Calling for a Public Hearing of an Ordinance for the Approval to Amend Munich Code Section...
You can speak on introduction.
6-48 and Adopt Building on Technical Codes Subject to the Provisions amended or accepted, including but not limited to the appendices. Mr. Perez.
Motion to approve, as read.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to clarify a note that caused a little bit of confusion under Code Number Two, Part D. There's a reference to one of the building codes, it's R3 occupancy. That is not a, it has nothing to do with the zoning of the City of Socorro. That's just a code that's identified in the International Building Code. But it's the same number as the zoning code at Socorro. It doesn't mean that we're gonna be adopting the R3 zoning again. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that we can include one amendment to the International Residential Code and to delete the entire chapter R313 because it's in conflict with the state law. It was just not included on the list of the codes that you have. And that section, section R313, it says that it's a requirement for all residential buildings to have a sprinkler system. And we're not gonna be enforcing that in Socorro.
We couldn't grandfather that, and then 40 new buildings would require the sprinkler systems?
The provision on that chapter applies only to new construction.
To new construction?
Yes.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lopez.
Yes.
Item number 11, Introduction, First Reading, and Calling for a Public Hearing of an Ordinance for the Proposed Rezoning of a Portion of Tracks 1A, 2A, 1B, 2C, Block 10, Socorro Grant, 1100 block of North Loop from C2, General Commercial to R2, Medium Density Residential for a Future Development.
Mayor.
Ms. Reyes.
Motion to approve with, in order to give them the opportunity to design their future development.
Ms. Reyes, can you repeat that, please?
I'm sorry?
Or to repeat it?
A motion to approve to give the applicant the opportunity to design their future development.
For discussion.
Mm-hmm. For discussion, please.
Second.
But it's an introduction. Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Adam Wachoa, I'm the New Plan and Zoning Director here for the City of Socorro, Texas. Let me pop that up real quick to give you an idea of what we're, what we're talking about. The proposed zone changes for the block shown here, highlighted in the yellow, it is the front portion where it's gonna be a future subdivision in that area. Essentially, currently it is Zone C2. It'll be the entrance, if you will, to the subdivision that is, that will be Zone R2. So it'll be for single-family residential lots, essentially, is what it is. Other than that, let's see here. The remainder of the portion to the south will remain commercial. This is just gonna be the entry, if you will, into the residential area. So it'll also be residential lots, just like the rest of it that heads, I believe, southwest, if you will, shown there on the map. But I could clarify, any questions? If you have any questions for me, I could gladly answer those.
Mr. Perez.
That kind of doesn't make sense to me, that they would do the residential in front, and then the remaining back portion, you said, of the property, or to the site? You said the south side, right? Would be commercial. How, how would that work? Because I just, I see that it's residential, but the back, how would, if we got residential right in that back area there?
Sure thing. Let me zoom that a little bit more in first. Madam Mayor, Representative Perez, if you look in your, in your, in your staff reports, it kind of shows how, pardon me, there will be an entrance into the subdivision starting there,
Okay.
which is, will be local roadway for residential purposes. And that'll continue, following my cursor, entrance into here, and it'll continue this way into the remainder of the residential subdivision that'll be back here as well.
So the intent is to have a residential area back?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
This is, this will just be the entry point into it.
Yeah, North Loop is here, that's Rojas, that's the fire station.
That is correct, sir.
Or I think, is that the fire station?
Yes, sir. Rojas Elementary School's right here, fire station is right here. And, well, that's the open area, which is where the subdivision will essentially be, sir.
Okay. It's just I heard commercial in that part. So again, for my own clarification, I apologize, I didn't mean to beat this very much, but the yellow outline is the proposed change from the C2 to the, from the commercial to residential.
That is correct, sir.
The current condition that they have right there, this portion of land is currently zoned as commercial. I'm just gonna turn off the overlay. Well, it's incomplete, but it's, all this is commercial currently. And they wanna rezone this area to residential. Because there's gonna be a future subdivision that's gonna extend all the way to railroad tracks along this line. So they're only asking for a zoning change on that area there.
That's...
They're gonna be able to add some additional residential lots.
Just a few.
They had, they had, it was residential. They requested a rezoning to commercial. That was approved, and now they wanna go back to residential.
Okay.
Welcome, sir.
Real quick, gentlemen, that, that stretch of thin, narrow, is that for a road?
You still haven't seen the subdivision cap? They're just asking for that, that could be rezoned, but you haven't seen the subdivision cap yet.
That is just part of the actual zone change area, ma'am. There's no actual designation for roadway or for lots, or anything like that, as of yet.
It just looks funny, you know, what...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And welcome. Thank you.
Rene Rodriguez.
No.
Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
It was just for the public hearing? Yes.
Victor Perez.
If it's for the public hearing, yes, because people can't invoice it.
I agree with, with Mr. Perez, yes.
Item number 12, Introduction, First Reading, and Calling for a Public Hearing of Ordinance 397, Amendment Three, to Decrease Fiscal Year 2016-2017 Budget in the Amount of $144,031.67.
Mayor.
Ms. Reyes.
On here, we have that we're going to decrease the fiscal year budget in the amount of $144,000. On the second page, it's telling me that it's going to increase adopted and amended budget to increase.
No, we will be decreasing the budget, so it's a typo error on the summary sheet. Right?
We'll just make that correction.
No, it's in the ordinance.
On the backup?
Excuse me?
Are you talking about the backup?
It's on the...
No, it's on the...
Where do you see the increase?
The word says to increase, word says instead of decrease, so there needs to be a correction on that.
Where?
That's all, just so that gets, can be uniform.
On the ordinance.
Okay. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
With a correction, I apologize.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number 13, Discussion and Action on Approving the Unaudited Financial Report for September 2017.
Motion to approve.
Ms. Reyes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
No.
Item number 14, Discussion and Action to Terminate Award Castle Structure LLC for City of Socorro Roofing Project.
Mr. Rivera. Motion to...
Ms. Reyes.
This for, discussion?
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We want to let you know that we did discuss awarding the bid last time to a vendor. The vendor has been unresponsive in negotiating the contract. So we're looking to move forward with the next bidder that sent a proposal to the RFQ that we had published.
And I just wanna make an addition, is that we had to send them a cancellation, a termination letter, and that is due tomorrow. If we don't receive a response by tomorrow, then we can terminate. If we don't receive a response by tomorrow, then we can terminate, not before then.
Was it?
Mr. Perez?
Was it certified, ma'am?
Yes.
The cancellation?
The attorneys, our attorney, sent it to their attorney.
Oh.
Mr. Duran?
Is there any kind of financial burden on them or on us because of this?
What do you mean, financial burden?
I mean, are they gonna say that they, they did some work and now they wanna get paid for it?
They haven't done any work.
Okay.
We haven't even been given a contract.
Okay.
That's what we're pending, that's why we're giving them notice that you have seven days to provide us a contract in order for us to go. And the reason that this is so time-sensitive is because we have insurance money for the hail that needs to be used by December. If I don't, if we don't complete the work, we can lose those funds.
Yes, that's what I meant.
Ms. Reyes?
And we received no contact from them whatsoever?
They ha- they responded on Wednesday stating they are interested, but we haven't received anything since then. That's why I'm going ahead and asking for permission to terminate if I don't receive an answer by tomorrow. The second item will discuss the second option that we have, i- if we have to terminate that contract.
Ma- Mayor and Council, if I may, my partner, Juan Baty, has been handling those negotiations with Attorney Ken Kaufman on their side. The deadline for them to sign the contract is tomorrow. And therefore, the recommendation is if you are going to approve this item to terminate this award, that it be subject to them not returning a signed contract by tomorrow. In other words, the deadline expiring. And, and, you know, you should not take action to terminate while that deadline is still outstanding. That's by the end of the day tomorrow. At the same time, we talked about not having to come back for another council meeting on this issue. And, and so, if you're gonna approve this, approve it contingent that they don't, that it's terminated in the event that by the end of the closing business date tomorrow, we don't have a signed contract from them. The lawyer did respond today and indicated that they would return a sign. And so, we don't know if it'll happen or not, but that's the latest indication.
So the price is outrageous.
It was your motion, right?
It was your motion?
Okay, all I'm saying is that we haven't arrived to a price. So if the price is outrageous, I'm not gonna sign that contract. Okay? So even if they sign it by tomorrow, we have not agreed on a price. So at that point...
But is, is the price differential based on the bonds? Is that what the...
Yes, but they haven't provided us the price.
Right.
So I'm not, in other words, I don't wanna be, just because they submit a contract tomorrow and I don't agree with the price, I don't wanna be buying and signing that contract.
Mr. Reyes?
Because we haven't negotiated a price.
Wait, when we went out for, for qualifications and stuff, they should already submitted until the month of bid.
Not for the qualifications, because once you, once you...
So you mean to tell me that we didn't go out and, and say, hey, how much are you going to do this?
Yes, and that's what we've been trying to do for a while. That's why we're giving them the deadline, because I need a price before I can move on.
That's not what I asked. What I asked is, they didn't know, none of the three bidders or anybody who bid it submitted an amount.
Correct.
Wow, okay.
Mayor.
Ms. Reyes?
Motion to amend my, for discussion.
Second, yes.
The way you're saying it is, sir, is that even if they do send a contract by tomorrow five, we're, are we not obligated to it because we don't know exactly what the price is going to be? If it's, if it's outrageous, or because they did hand one in as is, are we obligated to accept it?
My understanding was they had submitted a price and the only issue was the bond amount. Is that incorrect? I could be wrong.
Correct. They did submit a price, and then they told our attorney that they were gonna up the price, that it wasn't gonna be the same price they quoted us. So until now, we haven't received a contract. The way that the procurement process works is we go out for a proposal, they submit a proposal, we come back to city council to sign and overlook the contract. We still have not even been presented with a contract. So if they do submit a contract, it would still have to come back. However, we have not agreed on a price between their attorney or our attorneys.
Victor, my understanding is they did submit a contract, which we rejected and submitted to them our own form?
Correct. They submitted a contract that was not agreeable with our attorney.
And the issue, the, the primary point of contention is the requirement of the government code that the contract include payment performance bonds. And, and that is, I believe, what would be the price differential between what they had before and...
Okay. You know what?
Mr. Rodriguez?
I always, when I do contracts, explaining some, this is the price I'm willing to do the job for, and that's it. If they, if they require me to be bonded and insured, that's up to me. When I turn in that amount, it's that amount, period. If these contractors don't wanna buy by that and they already know what we're asking them for, and they don't want it, they brought somebody else, then they should be eliminated. Because they already know the set price. They already know that they're supposed to be insured and bonded if we ask for it. I don't know if we did or not, that's my question. My question was, is that we didn't know a price. But now I'm hearing that, yes, there was a price, but then they didn't include the, the bond, correct? So therefore, the answer is, yes, Mr. Rodriguez, that's what it should be done. But they came back and said, oh, we're willing to add this because it's gonna be more because we didn't add the bond to it. Okay? That's the proper way to come up and tell me that. Don't say that, no, there wasn't a price, because there was a price set. Whether they agreed to it or not, then that's totally different. I believe that if they do not comply, they should be considered, and we should withdraw. It's just that simple.
Ms. Ellos?
I have two questions. The, the first one is, so you're saying, and I, and I think you touched on it, but you're saying that the reason they're increasing their, they might be increasing their contract is because they, they, they quote it without insurance and bond?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they quote it without payment performance bonds required by the government code.
Okay, all righty. The other question is, has the second company been contacted and, and notified?
The second company was contacted and notified of today's meeting, pending the outcome of the first vendor's actions.
I did notice that their rating was a little bit different, was a little bit less than the first rating. And one of the ratings on the second company was their response time was, was lower. Do they know how important this is for us to...
Lower in terms of faster or longer?
No, no, they had a, you guys had a scale, right?
Correct.
They were, and the response time, I think, was, was low. There was a lower response than the first one that was elected.
In terms of a rating?
In, yes, in rating.
Yes, they are aware that we are contingent on insurance money and that we did suffer massive damages due to the weather. So they have been, they came to the property after their initial bid to look it over to see what the damages were from the first time they're out here, and they understand the severity and the impact of the project.
And I wanna add that the reason that this contract has been such controversy is because when we had hail, we had the flooding that we declared that our roof from Rio Vista collapsed. So then we went out and requested a quote just for that building because we needed an, an emergency repair. But the company took too long, so at this point, it's like, well, just add the whole buildings to the contract. Because it's not ju- okay, so it's not just Rio Vista. It's the courthouse, it's administration. All of the buildings that the city owns that received hail damage are included in the RFP, RFQ that we did. However, when we had that hail damage, that the roof collapsed in Rio Vista, we went out and asked, can you perform the work like tomorrow? Okay? Because it was an emergency, you know, we had vacuies and all of that. However, they never, weren't, weren't able to come back with an agreement that we were both in agreement with. So now, it's like, let, well, let's do all the buildings. We're no longer in monsoon season.
And also on that rating, I'm worried because it, they did state, the second company did state they knew some what, how to fix a historical, how to put a historical roof. And so I'm worried about that with the second company. I'm not sure about the first company.
As far as historical properties go, our, our engineering firm that has the HSR, the Historical Structure Report, right in Dalbin, have been involved in all of the restoration work. So they would guide them as to how properly to do it, as well as sustain the Texas Historical Commission.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome. Mr. Duran?
When did this, um, when was the damage, when, what was the date of the damage on the buildings?
To Rio Vista, July thirty-first, August first.
July thirty-first. Why has it taken so long to get bids on these? That we're, we're at the, we're at the deadline?
We had already received the bids. The company itself has been lagging to respond to us. We had already informed them that we did need them to be bonded and insured. They haven't been responsive to us in terms of offering us an actual contract. If they had, go ahead. If they had been, we would've presented it to council, because we do need our roofs fixed.
Okay, and has the insurance company given us an amount of what they are gonna cover?
Yes. The insurance company gave us the amount, and then we actually had to extend the deadline to December for us to go ahead and get the insurance monies applied to this project.
Okay, so now are the bids higher or lower than, are we gonna have to come up with money?
Pardon me, yes.
Okay.
But that was from the initial process, that was from, because of his building, that it's historical, his is gonna take, it's gonna be costly. Okay? And that's why we're using CO funds for his roof, because that's part of the rehabilitation of the Rio Vista farms. Okay? The other money would probably cover the other buildings.
Thank you.
Mr. Perez?
Uh, thank you. I have, I, I think I hear we've got two different things going on, two or three different things going on. My first concern is, or my first clarification that I needed, no work has been done by this company?
Correct.
Okay, so, all right. So then, if they've been informed that they need to submit a bond, a performance bond, wouldn't that automatically disqualify them at this point? Because if they haven't submitted, and the only thing that we're handing on is that con- that, that contract, which I need clarification. The contract was extended to them for a certain amount of money?
Okay, so they, they submitted a contract?
Right.
Okay?
And that contract had a set amount?
Yeah, and, and that contract got forwarded to the attorney.
Okay.
The attorney reviews and comes back and says, no, we need bond, insurance bond, and needs this, and needs that. So they're going back and forth, that company and them. Then, when we said, no, we do need the insurance bond, then they go back, and we're waiting for the response to come back with a final product and a price. We haven't heard from them. So then, I get on the phone with the attorneys and say, I need action done, right? I'm, I'm, I'm not CC'd until I'm, we're here. So then, I need action. So we sent out a termination letter and gave them till tomorrow to respond to us with the final contract. So what we're asking is approving if, if they submit whatever it is that we do. But I don't wanna be, if the price is outrageous because they're adding the insurance bond, I mean, I don't have to sign that contract if I don't agree with it. Regardless, if, because we're still going back and forth, that contract hasn't been signed. I understand they have to come back.
So the, the, so then, if they come back with a, a higher price because of the performance bonds, then as a city, you want, you want the authority not to continue the contract?
Correct. I mean, I know it's gonna come back at a higher cost. However, I just don't wanna be linked to that contract. There's other companies that, that are able to do it.
Ms. Reyes?
If we do not, even though they submit the contract with the bond performance on it and it is higher, and we ca- can we still go ahead and deny and not have any type of liability to the city?
The letter that was sent to them creates the power for them to accept the terms of the letter and submit a contract by tomorrow, so like, uh... We can discuss specifics and potential liability to the city in close session if you wish, but there's certainly the potential for a claim that they should come back and say, well, yes, we, here's the signed contract that you proposed to us, that's a binding agreement.
Mr. Rodriguez?
So in, in other words, if we would've just left it at that, we could've just parted our separate ways because they did not meet the criteria that was placed initially, which include the bond, correct? And we could've just walked away without giving a formal letter to them like we did.
They were not including payment performance bonds required by law, so I believe that to be correct, yes.
Ms. Ellos?
I think my concern here is that this is a big project. I think many companies would jump at the chance of taking a big project like this, you know, and benefiting themselves and their employees and whatnot. And for them to, at the last hour, here, come here and, and still not be ready for us, what makes us think that they're going to do the best job for the city? You know, and so therefore, I believe, even if they do sign something tomorrow, their word means nothing really right now at this point. Their credibility, I think, they, they have shown what their habits are.
Correct.
Mr. Duran?
I think this needs to be in executive session, because there's a lot of numbers I think we need to hear. And I'd like to make a motion to move item number fourteen to executive session when we go in. Can we? Have we had a motion?
Mm-hmm, we have a motion for discussion. I made my motion to move it to executive.
Well, I, I don't need to, because...
I mean, he explained it, but it's, we're not clear on it. We're not clear on it.
No, 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 it's, it's just clear cut, guys. I already asked the question, that should be enough.
Already, motion. I already made the motion.
Second.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't feel comfortable going to executive if we're not, if we're not gonna ask attorney for, for, um, for, uh, advice, legal advice.
Oh, wait, wait, we wanna execute it?
Okay, no, I under- I misunderstood. I thought it was just for approval.
So...
So this motion is to, got to amend, this is a very sensitive, the motion to go with, decide and for executive.
Okay, did you wanna revoke? Do you wanna...
Yeah, I wanna revoke, but, yeah, so... So anybody wants a second? Ms. Reyes is the...
Second.
Rene Rodriguez?
May.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Yes.
No, and not because I don't, it's just the, I don't know if it's proper for us to go into executive session.
Number one, you guys, it's very hard to hear you, and I'm sure it's very hard for you guys to hear them. So please speak up and be very clear, because we're everywhere today. We're everywhere today. Number two, yes.
Item number fifteen, discussion and action to award the RFQ seventeen dash zero zero five roof repairs to Sky Ridge Construction LLC and designate city manager or her designee to execute the contract. Mr. Duran?
I think with the attorney's advice is that I'll make the motion to approve the award of the RFQ eleven, or pardon me, seventeen dash zero zero five roof repairs to Sky Ridge Construction LLC and designate, designate city manager or her designee to execute the constant, the contract contingent on the acceptance or non-acceptance of the Casco Structure LLC, is that correct?
Yeah, it would be contingent on the non-acceptance of the other one.
Okay, contingent on the non-acceptance of Casco Structure LLC.
Second. Mr. Perez?
All right, um, we're looking at that these are historical structures.
Correct.
Okay, that's one. Two, the, although they haven't been very responsive, the other company is the one with the most experience, I would assume, with historical structures.
Both of them had experience, the first vendor had more experience than the second.
Okay.
Uh, this, this new vendor, Skyridge, um, they were very responsive once I contacted them.
Okay.
It's the first investor Casco that was not responsive.
So then, you would, you all would feel comfortable with going if, if the other vendor doesn't, is not timely in their submission of the contract?
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't think we can make a decision on this item until we discuss the other item on executive.
Yeah, that's, that's a contingency, is that if, if, uh, Casco does not submit their agreement uh, within the, 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 the time window, the timeframe that you all gave them, then they are forfeiting that, that project.
Correct.
And that leaves us open to go with, uh, Skyridge, right? And they are aware of all of the bonding issues and those kinds of things?
Yes, when they submitted the proposal, they included everything, and there was no problem. I submitted everything to the attorney and city manager, and they overlooked it.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Hi.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Hi.
Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number sixteen, discussion and action on preliminary plat approval for East Lake Valley subdivision being a portion of tract eight and fifteen Block Four Socorro Grant.
Mr. Duran?
I was putting my glasses on.
Ms. Reyes?
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Third.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, again. This is a proposed preliminary plat, or, uh, request for approval for a preliminary plat known as East Lake Valley Subdivision. Uh, subject property is, uh, approximately seventy-four point eight-one acres in size, uh, located affronting along Nuevo, uh, Waco Tanks Boulevard. Subject property is made up, uh, the proposed subject, uh, the proposed subdivision, excuse me, is made up of C-two zoning and R-two zoning. The C-two zoning would be fronting along Old Waco, uh, Nuevo Waco Tanks, excuse me, and, uh, the residential, single-family residential, about three hundred and fourteen lots, would be behind that, uh, immediately southeast of, uh, uh, Nuevo Waco Tanks. The, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, did recommend approval with conditions for the proposal. Those conditions want to, want to install a, uh, require the applicant to install a rock wall one foot inside the proposed subdivision. Uh, another one is to add a stubout, uh, for fu, for future road on what's called Lot One, uh, thirteen thirty-four of the Street I, uh, and add another stubout for future road on Lot thirteen eighty-nine on Street B, and as well as to remove one of the proposed, uh, stubouts, uh, between Lots thirteen hundred and thirteen oh six on Street I. Uh, that is, it, that was in your staff report, uh, as you can see, um, the ones that are, uh, it says add, they're the two closest to the center, if you will, of the subdivision, uh, and then the removal of the one, uh, further, uh, to the south, if you will. Um, as well as before you, y'all, they'd get, uh, some additional comments from our engineers, uh, about the proposed subdivision. Engineers have no issue with continuing this preliminary plat, those, those are comments that can be taken care of during construction of the subdivision. Uh, but as you can see, uh, the actual, uh, excuse me, uh, the attachment of the subdivision to those comments have the original stubouts, the two stubouts, more the, that, that were originally approved or brought before, uh, staff and the engineer for the proposed subdivision. And I expect for questions, you have any questions?
Mr. Perez?
Yes, thank you. Um, none of those properties will be landlocked? Uh, I, I don't know if it's too early to tell, but, uh, those adjacent properties that are vacant, um, I know that we, we've had issues with, uh, landlocked properties, and so I just wanna make sure that none of those areas will be landlocked.
They are currently landlocked right now. With the subdivision, it will open up access for them not to be landlocked.
And so they're going to allow that, right? They're not going to block it off, but that's...
No, that's one of the requirements is that they give them access.
Okay.
Ms. Vialos?
No, that's my, thank you, yeah.
Ponding areas, the ponding areas, do we know, um, what kind of ponding the, the builders proposing? Or the developers proposing?
Madam Mayor, Representative, uh, Colombia Lobos, uh, there are the two, if you look at the si, at the proposed subdivision, there are two proposed, uh, regional ponds within the subdivision itself. If you, let's see here.
I know they're proposed, but is this something that we are going to require, uh, planning and zoning is going to require?
Yes, our engineer has already reviewed it and has approved.
Correct.
Sorry, um, I'm sorry, and I, I'm not done. These, these are questions that I was, uh, I had a constituent call me and tell me that, uh, they were at the meeting at Planning and Zoning, and that, um, it was not approved there, and why is it being brought here, uh, today for us for approval? Why not send it back to Planning and Zoning now that, now that, uh, um, the, um, additional requirements have been discussed and, uh, I guess, agreed upon?
It was approved in the planning and zoning with the conditions that were imposed on them. Then once they bring it to council, if you send it back, it doesn't have to go back to planning and zoning. It comes straight to council.
Okay, and so therefore, all the items that the residents in, are there any residents here?
Yes, they, they're signed up.
They're signed up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so everything that has been discussed and those residents have, um, all, all the items that were required have been agreed upon?
Is he signing?
Not yet.
Okay, no, okay, so we will hear about those, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All righty, that's, that's my concern.
Ms. Reyes?
Okay, um, I under, this is just something that, uh, that I kind of thought about because the last subdivision, they may change just after the planning and zoning meeting, and then this one may change just after the planning and zoning, uh, meeting as well, so that even the planning zoning doesn't even know what they're asking for, um, as far as them going back so they can check. They've been working on this for months, and I think it's only proper that they have their, the, um, the, the facts in front of us to make sure that this is being done properly. Uh, I also understand that we have, we do have the retention ponds, two of them, uh, and I'm looking at the required documents here, and it says ponding drainage, three point five acres. We have single-family, fifty-two point nine. We have commercial, eight point four five acres. But then when it comes to a park, zero. Why are we don't, we have parks? The other thing I'm very much concerned is, um, if, I feel that because they've invested so much time in this, and this letter that they have here, which is the, um, what is it called, the survey? I apologize, just, okay, the review letter. Right here it says, the only recommendations we have were the ones we listed in our review letter. Uh, based on the letter, the main recommendations are listed below. These are recommendations based on what they're gonna do. Does this take into, uh, consideration the recommendations that the planning and zoning? Does one override the other? Do they work in agreement? What is it that they're going to do with their, um, excuse me, with their recommendations versus the planning and zoning? I, I just feel that, um, why is it coming back to us now? I'm not an engineer, I don't know what this means. They've been working on it for months, and I don't think it's fair to planning and zoning that it comes to us on the last minute after changes were done and planning zoning has not had a chance to even look at it. Uh, we don't, okay, they're not being landlocked, all legal correspondence has been met. You know, they don't even have services out there. They, if they need any type of quality service, ambulance, fire, PD, they don't go in there because they have to go to the church in order to get those kinds of services, and I don't think that's fair. So I don't know if any of this is gonna affect that, but, um, I just, I don't, I don't care for this, sir, and I do apologize, but I, I think we have to take into consideration that, yes, I like growth, I have no problem with growth, but it has to be a fair, uh, decision on both. The last time I looked, the constituents were the first ones on our organizational chart who we, uh, are responsible for. Um, it does not say developers, they didn't say any of that. So I wanna make sure that these constituents get a fair deal, uh, as well with any type of changes, and it goes back to planning and zoning.
That's not the way the process...
Mr. Lauta?
Okay, um, unfortunately, that's not the way the process or your ordinances are written. The developer has met all of the requirements that you have in your ordinance. At that point, it comes to council because you have to make that decision. It does not go back to planning and zoning, that's just not the procedure, it's never been done. And he, they're meeting everything that the subdivision ordinance that you all require, they have met the requirements.
So whether they come up with something after the fact that planning and zoning is not even aware, they get it regardless?
No, no, but, planning and zoning, okay, so there was imposing from the planning and zoning. So they, it go, it goes back to the engineer, the engineer comes back to us, we send it to the engineer, and then here we are.
My question...
With the recommendations, the engineer made comments, the engineer is telling you that they will meet all of the comments, that they're requesting, there is a response to every comment that the engineer did, and they're saying, we don't have any problems with it, we will comply. However, I can't invent or add to the subdivision because I'm not the policymaker. At that point, I bring it to you all so you can impose on the preliminary plat before they bring you the final plat to you all.
Ms. Vialos?
Okay, so, real, two things. One, we received this in our packet today, I, in our packet this week, where it has the changes in red, okay? But today, we received this one here, it was on our desk here when we got here. Which one is the one we're going with?
The, the little plat that you have in the packet, that's showing the recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The, those are only recommendations. The plat that came in today, that is the actual preliminary plat that was submitted. That is the preliminary plat, the one that you have in your packet are the recommendations from the commission. And this is, this is the first time that this subdivision is presented to you. It already went through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and now the next step is to, uh, present it to city council. After you...
And at this point, you guys can impose anything you all want.
Yes, after you review the recommendations and take action on it, then it's gonna go back to Planning and Zoning Commission as the final plat, and then it's gonna come back again.
Not as a preliminary.
This is only the preliminary plat.
Okay, so this is somewhat confusing. Um, so we can't tonight say we would like for, we would like the blessing of the planning and zoning before we make a determination?
The recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, those are recommendations for you all to consider, but you have the authority to amend or, uh, adopt whatever they recommend.
So if we have the authority to do that, then we have authority to send it back to planning and zoning for their blessing?
Well, that's for the final plat. In other words, you will say anything that you wanna impose on the subdivision. They, it'll go to the developer, the developer will decide whether they wanna follow the recommendations or not, then the final plat comes to the planning and zoning.
When they bring the final plat, it's gonna bring the, whatever recommendations or whatever you approve, it'll, it'll be in the final plat. The packet that you have there, uh, showing the, the engineering reports, that's just a requirement from the ordinance. Everything that we have asked this, uh, engineer, they have provided ahead of time.
Okay.
That's why the package is so big. That's all the stuff that is required per ordinance.
Thank you, and...
And the engineer, the engineer is present.
Okay. I, I think, um, quite frankly, I'm seeing a pattern here, and I think I'm seeing a loophole that we need to fix, and we need to sit down and talk about that in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Duran?
I'm looking at the plat, and I don't see any parks. We, we talk about quality of life, we talk about, I hear everybody complaining, well, Horizon City has this, has that. Well, I would rather, if I was looking for a house, I would look for one that has a park for my kids to play in. And according to our, the draft of the Parks Master Plan, right now as it sits, many parks which they have designations are current is point eight of an acre. The standard should be sixteen point four acres. We're way behind on that. On neighborhood parks, we have currently seventeen point two acres, the standard should be thirty-two point nine acres. On community parks, twenty-eight point one acres, we should have a hundred and sixty-four point four acres of parks. And regional, we have zero current. We should have three hundred and twenty-eight point eight acres of parks. So in total, currently, we have forty-six point one acres of parks, we should have five hundred and forty-two point five. We want people to come to Socorro, we want people to come and buy these homes, they're not gonna come. They're gonna go elsewhere because there's no place for their kids to play safely. I see two drainage ponds. We do have drainage ponds that double as parks. Excuse me, I have the floor, sir, thank you. Once we get those, if we can go back, and I know that it's in there that they can give us money instead of doing the parks, well, we've seen what the city does with the extra money, they squander it. The parks will be here forever, the money won't. And I just think we need to send this back to the engineers and have parks put in there? I don't know, what is the, the street that the people that are landlocked? How many feet is that street?
Currently, all those properties are landlocked, uh, and the reason you don't see a park in this subdivision is because the city of Socorro is currently, uh, we have already about seventeen parks in the city, and we are understaffed. We are asking the engineers and any future development to go away with the parks and pay the two and a half percent instead. That is an option that is available to them in the ordinance. The reason we don't need parks at the moment is, we don't have the capacity or the staff to maintain all those parks. We don't wanna have parks that are gonna be dilapidated tomorrow. And it was determined that, in this subdivision, there's already a park nearby. It's real close to Moon Park, and that should cover the capacity for this area here.
That, that's not what I was asking. I was asking the width of the street that the people that are landlocked. What is the width of the street that they have to get into and out of their properties?
They don't have a street because they are surrounded by private property. The property that is on the south belongs to the Water Improvement District. All the properties that are adjacent to them, they are, uh, they have an owner, they are private property. You can see in the, this is the way the, the whole, uh, it was designed in the Socorro Grant. This is how, it's still the Socorro Grant, it's not platted. For that reason, everything is landlocked, there is no way in or out. They have been crossing over private property. The road that you see here have, they've been using this to cross, um, over private property, basically. So they are landlocked. There is no such thing as landlocking them more.
I'm just saying, I, I realize they're landlocked, but what can we do for them? To get them so that they have a safe way to get in and out of their properties?
Thinking about the future development of Socorro, we are providing, well, we are recommending, uh, an access, or a stubout point in the middle here, and another stubout in the bottom of this subdivision, proposed subdivision, for a future connection through the middle of these lots. That's the only thing that the engineer can provide at the moment because they don't own any of these. I guess, uh, the way they... I guess, the way they explained it to us, they were trying to buy land to expand in the future, but at the moment, the only thing that they can do in their, in their land is provide stopout for future connectivity. The stopouts that the Planning and Zoning Commission were recommending are not going to benefit the residents that are in the further bottom part of the, of these tracts of land. By putting a stopout in the middle, in the future, they can run a street right through the middle, and it'll be at the midpoint to provide utility services for both of these farmlands. Some of the residents on the other side of the lateral expressed that in the future, they were going to move out of this area here. So, they have no interest on this future roadway. Also, there's a stopout here on the Gijalva roadway. So, in the future, the city was planning on connecting this to the new subdivision.
If I, and pardon me if I may add, Mr. Duran, to answer your question about the, the road width, it does meet the, the city standards for local roadway, sixty feet wide, forty feet, forty feet of pavement, that's the width of the stub outs that they're proposing, sir.
Okay. And well, now back to the parks. You're saying we don't have enough people. Well, in the past...
The city.
Pardon me?
The city doesn't have the staff to keep up with all the parks that we currently have.
Okay. We're, we're kind of like, we don't have the people, so let's not have them, why don't we get more people? When admin needed another assistant, there was no problem hiring one. When our Parks and Recreation needed another assistant, no problem hiring one. Why can't we hire more people so that we have decent parks, so that the people will want to come to Socorro? And we don't have enough parks as it is, our own parks, the draft of the master plan anyway. We're so behind. Why? Because we take the money. We don't need, we need to have parks that will bring people to Socorro. The more people come to Socorro, more businesses will come, and we will prosper. But as I see it right now, all that we're doing is building houses with no parks, and the people have, will drive over to the Southern Park. It's in that subdivision, they should each have a park, and we should hire more people so that we can maintain the parks the way they should be.
That will be a discussion for another meeting. We are working on the mass, the Parks Master Plan. We could probably talk about the parks and...
Mr. Duran?
You can definitely impose a park if that's what you wish, you just stay tonight, part of your motion that you want a park instead of the money, the two point five percent.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rodriguez?
I mean, I understand that we want quality of life because that's one of the issues that we face, is that we don't have quality of life. And I get it and I understand, but when, you know, we have to be reasonable and we have to see what's best for the city. We have three employees, one more time, three employees for seventeen parks. Seventeen parks, people, half of those parks, go look at them, please, go look at them. They're weeds, it's vacant, no grass, no playgrounds. So, why add more to the capacity that we can't even maintain? So, there we go again with the quality of life. If we want quality of life, we start fixing what we don't have right now before we start adding more, and that's one of the things that we have to address. It's not about adding more parks because we don't maintain what we have. That's what we need to do. As policymakers, we need to address that, and we need to know why we can't maintain half. And I'm just talking about half. And one of the questions that our constituents need to understand is that, I said, half of the seventeen parks have some sort of grass, has some sort of playground, and at that, we can't even maintain that half. So, therefore, why continue to add more parks? Let's try to find a solution, fix the half of the half of the parks that we have, and then fix the other half, and then fix the remainder that we have before we all tackle some more. One of the things is that I understand because it's quality of life, but you know what? Figures don't lie. But what Mr. Duran is failing to, to address is that when the city of Socorro was initiated in eighty-five, there are more old subdivisions than there are new subdivisions. So, therefore, when we make the master plan, they encompass even the old. Therefore, yes, we're under the parks. We don't have them because why? Because when it was county, there was no parks to start with. So, my whole issue is this, we want to address an issue, of course. We understand that there's quality of life, but my golly, go to district two, and there's a big hole, and I guarantee you, because I've done it. I went into the middle of the ditch, of the park slash ponding. That thing looks like a Super Bowl because I guarantee you that, I can't even look, if I was standing on the top, I couldn't. If it rains and a child is there, I guarantee you, if the harm, harm comes to that child, it should be on them because I'm not allowing to go with my child there when it's raining. There's parks, I, and I get it. There's why, there's reasons why I'm against it because we cannot maintain what we have. And until that solution arises, then we'll start tackling more. For me, well, yes, Mr. Duran also said that, "Oh, we're misspending." Of course we are, and I'm telling you, because we just spent ten thousand dollars on a name change. Of course! I didn't vote for that. But there's misspending, so there's the knife of two sides. So, I'm just saying, let's start, let's just move on. We got to take care of that, but there's an issue that we have to face. We have to look at what is presented to us and take action on that before we start even implementing and putting more stuff that we can't even handle.
Ms. Reyes?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have some valid points, Mr. Rodriguez? But at the same time, if I'm going to pay close to over two hundred thousand dollars for a home in a new subdivision where I might, because I'm not an engineer, I don't know what they're going to do or not do on the landlock and have tractor trailers, farm equipment, everything goes through that, I am going to be very much disappointed. The other thing is that I would like, and they're probably, you're looking at maybe the younger type of, of family raising a new family, that are going to want a park for themselves. Regardless, it's something that we have to tackle, if we have to cut expenses here or there, wherever, not to a point where it affects the quality of life in other areas, but that we also can and we should if we're going to be a big city. We can't just keep saying, "Oh, we can't, we can't, we can't." No, there has to find, we have to find a solution, and when it has to be brought forth, and it might, you know, I, it, it upsets me because for the longest time, previous councils didn't do anything because they were so busy with the corruption and the spending of, of for personal agendas, okay? So, now is the time for us to be proactive, start looking at what we can do positive for this division.
Mr. Duran?
We keep hearing on, "We can't maintain what we have." Have you all been out to Bulldog Championship Park? It's very well maintained. Several parks in the city are very well maintained. Why is it only certain parks get the maintenance and others don't? This is what we need to ask ourselves. And when we, he's saying, "Well, we don't need any more parks because we can't take care of them." It's not going to be up to us to put that park together, it's up to the builder. He wants to build homes in Socorro, he has to put in also. It's not just take money out of Socorro, bring people in, and them have no place to go and nothing to do. Because we will get very few people, they'll go to other places where they do take care of their people, they do put parks, and what we need is, that is part of infrastructure. When people look at a place where they want to live, say a soldier comes to our, our area, he's going to look where there's parks, he's going to look where we have quality of life issues, and he's going, you know, they're not going to look at a forty-three thousand dollar Christmas tree, that's for sure. That we can't, we have to get away from that type of mentality, that we have the money, let's spend it. The people of Socorro deserve better than we're giving them, and we need to give them what they need. First, we need to give them what they want. Thank you.
Ms. Velaos?
Come on, guys, we need to stop saying we can't. We need to stop saying we can't. We can. We can because these homes are going to be two hundred thousand dollar homes. And if I'm not mistaken, when we first met with Mr. Escobar, who, by the way, I really liked the idea when he pitched when we first met, you know, there was going to be two doll, dog, dog parks and a walkway, and, and I thought, "My God, that's beautiful."
She has the floor, sir.
I'm not hearing that, sir, but I would love to hear what you have to say. Just, just let me finish. We can do it, we will do it, and it starts here. And I agree, we need parks and we need every builder from this point forward to start putting in the parks. We will find, we will get, and we will maintain. Thank you.
Do we have any speakers?
Yes, we do. Let me see, Trevino?
If you allow Mr. Escobar to speak first.
Mr. Escobar?
Good evening, mayor, good evening, council. I'm going to try to tell you how this came about, okay? Number one, I'm sorry, when, when we presented this subdivision, we not only presented this subdivision, we presented a master plan for that area, okay? The master plan exceeds three hundred acres. When we presented to several council, city manager, several employees, we talked about the park. It was decided by staff that at this time, at this time, having smaller parks would not benefit the city. So, in that master plan, there is a regional park that's, I want to say, a thousand yards from the edge of this subdivision, which is around ten or twelve acres, okay? That'll come with the next development. And you saw it, you were there, you were there, sir, the city manager, several employees. We were requested by staff not to build a park at this time because the staff was not here. As the homes come in, your tax base will increase, you will be able to hire more people to maintain the parks that you have and the new ones that are coming. When we presented that master plan to you, you were all happy because we had roundabouts, we had parks, we had a design area for a school. I even asked you and offered, "Are you going to need a police substation? Are you going to need a fire department? We'll be happy to comply." So, we've been trying through, you haven't been in that conversation, so of course you don't know, that's why I was trying to explain to you. That's number one. Number two, the residents that are here are presently landlocked, presently landlocked. There's no more, there's no less, they are landlocked. Staff requested us to give an access. We met with the residents. The residents that were there gave us a location. Not all of them, they didn't all agree, but the majority said, "This is fine." So, we incorporated that entrance in the design. That's the one we brought to the planning commission. Of course, you give something for free and they want more, so they came back and, "No, no, we want another one and we want another entrance." Every entrance that I give costs us between thirty and forty thousand dollars because we have to lose, we lose a lot, we have the street, the paving, everything else, utilities, okay? So, staff recommended that we add another access. Okay, so, staff, your engineers, your professional staff said, "Give us two points of access." What I requested is, I don't have a problem doing it, can I have some credit for permits or for park fees or for something because we're going to give up another lot? And they said, "We will discuss it in council." Fine, we designed that second exit. When we go to plant commission, the residents, of course, get up and want more. "Oh, we want a third entrance," okay? And not only do they want a third entrance, they want it on the side of the wall where if you have to build a street, you're going to build a one, one-sided street where it won't benefit more people. One entrance is, I don't, I think it's, what, three hundred yards from the other one? So, they just said, "One here and one here and one here" because it benefits the ones that are complaining the most, okay? The city, your staff, recommended two points of access, you have a third one on the bottom, and that'll give connectivity to everything else, okay? So, we agreed with that. All we're requesting, we're not requesting on both, all that we're requesting is we get some kind of compensation for the second entrance, okay? Apart from that, you've seen the master plan, it's the way that, what I was told the day I, I provided it, you said, "This is what we want Socorro to be." It has commercial, it has main streets, it has another access to the freeway, it has a main road that's horizontal with North Loop to alleviate the traffic. We've done everything that we've requested. Now, by law, sir, by law, I didn't have to do that, okay? I've done it because I'm trying to work with the city, okay? But I've complied with everything that I have to legally, okay? I've been to plant commission twice, it comes here for preliminary, we've answered everything the engineer has requested has been answered, okay? So, there's no legal reason why this should not be approved, okay? From here, it goes back to for final plat, okay? So, it's either you follow the recommendation of your staff or you impose more restrictions on the subdivision, which then we will have to decide if we do them or if we go to your market, okay? Up to now, we've tried to be nice neighbors, we've tried to be good developers, we want a quality subdivision, we want businesses to come in to the city, and up to now, we've complied with everything, but there's a point where it's ridiculous, okay, sir, it's ridiculous. You can't have entrances every thirty feet, okay? Your staff are the professionals, they know how the city's going to grow. So, up to now, we've done everything, it's on the table to get approved, and then we'll go to the next step to bring you the final plat. Okay, sir, you tell me, any questions?
You mentioned something about, you just mentioned it about compensation. What, what is that? Embarrassing?
Compensation? I'm going to give you another entrance that's recommended by staff, I already agreed. I don't have to do that legally, okay? So, I'm going to lose money. So, what I'm saying is, compensate me for the money that I'm losing. Don't give me money, but give me a credit because I have to pay Joe there a lot of money for permits, inspections. Do you remember the amount, Joe?
Thirty dollars.
How much?
Three feet.
Yeah, it was like a hundred thousand dollars I have to pay the city for inspections in the city and, and development fees. So, I was saying, "Okay, look, I'll give you the entrance, but, you know, give me something back." I've already donated two acres to the city in order to extend where it is now East Lake. Okay, I don't know if you know that, sir, either. But they came to us, we didn't say, "Pay us for East Lake," we donated it because we knew it's needed for the city and it was going to benefit our project, so we gave you two acres. We didn't sell it to you. We gave two acres to you, we gave the ponding to text out. I mean, up to now, we've been good neighbors. We've just been approached by a person who has property on the left where Old Waco turns and our street is, was going to get that end. He came up to us and said, "Will we extend one of our streets and they'll pay for it in order to have another access to the subdivision and, and have that area end up nice?" The engineer had a gripe, said he had to leave. But we've been trying to do everything in order to get a good subdivision, a good project, and get more people into Socorro so your tax base goes up, so you can resolve the issues that you have. I understand, you're a growing city, but right now, I think the staff is making the right choices. Don't give us another small park. We'll go to the regional one that's right next door when you come up for the next subdivision, and we'll have a bigger park. A bigger park, it's easier to maintain, it's more accessible to everybody, and it costs you less problems, okay? So, staff, city manager have been working diligently with me. Unfortunately, you know, you go to plant commission, and plant commission starts designing streets, which is not... which is not their job. Their job is to see if I complied with everything that's in the ordinance. And I've done that. But it's getting to the point where trying to be a good neighbor and a good person and a good developer is not working. So the other option is to go and talk to your lawyer and figure out how we can do this. And I don't wanna go there, sir, I really do not, because we have too many other properties in Socorro. And like I said, we, we've brought a master plan. It's been looked at. I, I invite you to go, you have a copy, do you have a copy? Well, I have a copy, I'll bring you one. Beautiful. I mean, wide streets, roundabouts, parks, school, uh, it's nice. And the people that saw it on council were very excited about it. And now all I get is, all I get is bad treatment. I'm the ugly developer, you know? No, I, that is all the time, but, uh, the point being is, we've tried to be nice, we've tried to do everything, okay? We've answered every question, but there's a point where, you know, you gotta do what we gotta do. So I don't know what else to answer. Anything else for me? No? I'll be happy to answer again.
Do we still have, um, constituents there if you're gonna speak?
Do we want to speak, sir? On the... The speakers, please?
Lettice, Lettice Trevino.
Yes, uh, good evening, my name is Lettice Trevino. And, uh, our land is right here, this is a pecan tree, uh, pecan farm, and we have plenty of pecan trees and also, uh, good evening, sorry, that's a good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Um, we are here because we do have, uh, plenty of concerns. You know, we had not had the chance to review his revised plans, his preliminary revised, uh, revised plans. And also, but we wanna make sure the entrances that he's providing in the revised plans are not blocked, because I know we're already landlocked, but if we are gonna be further that way, it's gonna cost us, you know, a lot of suffering burden for the, for the future. And, you know, like he said, they keep, they were planning to do a, a street over here to later on connect from here to there. I'm not gonna sell my land. So there, I don't know how they're gonna expand that road to go to my pecan, uh, farm. And also, you know, we do have, do we, we do, and my family and my neighbors, we do want a quality of life, which is to have utilities, we wanna have a proper drainage, and we wanna make sure when they develop the, development, uh, Eastlake, Mr. Escobedo, the water doesn't come to our land and floods it. And also, the irrigation water that comes through the Juan de Vera Lateral right here, it's gonna be right here with a, a fence.
Mr. Trevino, your, Mr. Trevino, your, your time is up. Claudia Garcia?
Pues, o sea, disculpen que nosotros, nosotros los vecinos y yo no podemos donarles a ustedes dos acres, no les podemos pagar cien mil dólares en permisos de, de, de la ciudad. Él puede vender una casa y ya le saca el dinero, pero nosotros lo único que estamos pidiendo es una cualidad de vida donde podamos entrar, porque nosotros dicen que van a ser sesenta pies, que nosotros nos enseñen las entradas, dónde van a estar los sesenta pies, nosotros nos están enseñando menos. Entonces necesitamos ver, porque ahí cuando llegue la, cuando llegue la ambulancia, no va a entrar ahí si no son los sesenta pies o lo que requiere la ley. Entonces ahí dice que el doce, nos dice el señor que iban a ser sesenta pies, yo no veo ahí los sesenta pies. Nosotros no hemos visto ni los planos ni nada de lo último, qué fue lo que se aprobó y qué no. Entonces nosotros, nos van a llegar el, todos los, los servicios de las utilidades, lo que quiero es saber las, los utilidades y lo principal, que pueda entrar la ambulancia. Porque ya todos estamos grandes, vamos a estar más grandes, y necesitamos ahí ese servicio. Eso es lo importante para nosotros, poder entrar y salir. Nosotros, okay, entramos con tractores, entramos cosas de, de la, uh, del farm. Okay, hay gente que va a gastar casas de doscientos mil dólares, van a querer que pasemos ahí entre medio, que tienen que buscarnos algo seguro para poder pasar, todos, y que, que nos enseñen dónde están según él, donde dice que son los sesenta pies. Es decir, hay que ver para la, el beneficio de todos los vecinos, no nomás, todos queremos ser buenos vecinos.
Claudia Garcia, se le terminó su tiempo.
Mayor and Council, I have provided you a small sketch of, uh, this is just going that extra mile, uh, the streets that you see overlaid on the, on those properties that are landlocked. That, those are just ideas to, for you to get a better picture of how we can, or how the city can, uh, create connectivity for future roads. They're just overlaid, um, that's not something that's gonna happen, it's just something so you get a better picture of what, the vision of future connections.
Ms. Ellos?
I'm, I'm gonna speak in Spanish, voy a hablar en español. Mr. Escobedo dijo, Escobar, okay, I was, I was right the first. Mr. Escobar dijo que sí va a haber este acceso a las propiedades. Dij, usted nos dijo qué tamaño va a ser?
Standard sixty foot.
Which is?
Sixty feet.
Sixty.
Sixty feet.
Y eso es lo que pide la, la gente también?
No, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
I understand, but right now, I'm concerned about them. So, sí es lo que, lo que ellos están pidiendo.
I don't know.
Estamos, parece que nos estamos, we're, we're going back and forth, y, y, y todos estamos de acuerdo, pero nadie quiere reconocer que estamos de acuerdo. Okay?
You don't, you only have a sixty foot, you have a sixty foot right away, then you have, you have, uh, uh, an area for traffic, and you have private side of it, okay? So when you talk about sixty feet, it's the right way, that is the standard sixty feet, you have all of it.
Y va a ser suficiente para una ambulancia?
It's not big enough, it's sufficient, every other thing is bound, you know, that's the whole, all, it's standard.
This is a sample of the sixty foot right away, uh, there's only a thirty foot pavement here, and then there's the shoulders where all the utility services run on the sides. This is a sixty foot right away.
And you're gonna have, in our subdivision, you're gonna have curving roads, you're gonna have sidewalks, you're gonna have, you're gonna have, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a way to look at it.
The proposed subdivision, he's saying that it's gonna look like this. Has curves, gutters, and then you have a space for the utility lines, the water lines, sidewalks, which is something that we don't have in most of the streets.
Y las casas van a quedar arriba y la calle abajo, para que el agua corra así.
Ma'am, ma'am, uh, it's now your turn to speak, I'm sorry.
What's with the rock wall? The rock wall? What, what, what is it that, that they asked?
They have to build right now, because your lot fall, it goes down the irrigation ditch, okay? Just to make sure, you know, you can't, you can't, if it's given to anyone, you can't start it, or, or not deliver any irrigation. So if there is anything you want that council has said, it's not, it's never been wanted in the subdivision. You're putting a six foot block wall around the ditch, I mean, outside of the ditch, because it would require something to be, in order to, to, to get, block wall, that block wall will go by us, and the rest of the block, block wall are built by the homeowners.
No, no entiendo cuál es el problema, si usted está, usted...
The problem is that they feel they're landlocked, and they want streets, and they want buildings, and they want, but they do not want, they don't want, they don't want their property, they don't wanna be on foot or, they want you to figure it out and you put it in. What I'm doing is, I'm going to get to their property, which, that's all I do, and I put there, they think, curb, sidewalk, building, fire hydrants, and access. But, of course, in my opinion, they want more, they want more from you, but they don't want, they want, they don't want, do the same property, they don't have anything to upset what they have, by the way I see.
With regards to this, um, the red staff recommendations, number one, install a rock wall, one foot inside the proposed subdivision. Explain that to me.
Madam Mayor, Representative Duran, uh, that's actually a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, it is not a recommendation from staff, that came directly from the Planning and Zoning Commission, sir.
And what does that entail? Is, is, was there a proposed rock wall, and now Planning and Zoning wants it moved over one foot?
Uh, m- m- Mr. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Duran, excuse me, um, they, they, I believe the recommendation is just for them to provide a, a rock wall one foot inside the property along the entire, uh, property essentially, sir, I think is what they're, what they're proposing. They weren't really clear, I believe, as to exactly what they meant by that, they just want a rock wall along the property.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Call for the question.
Let, um, let Joe just clarify on the answer that was just...
What, the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission is, because he's gonna put a rock wall along the perimeter of the subdivision. When a rock wall is built to separate a lot line, they put half of the rock wall on one property and half on the other. Well, because the residents who live in this area, they don't wanna give away a foot of, or six inches of their property.
How much?
They're ask, six, six inches. That's why they were asking to move the entire rock wall to be completely inside the proposed subdivision.
Why do the residents think that? Why are the residents not thinking that it's six inches? Why are they thinking it's more?
That was a discussion that was done with the Planning and Zoning Commission, they were asking, they want the entire rock wall off of their property in his, in the proposed subdivision.
Do we have other questions? Do we have other speakers?
Is that what you, you're saying it right now?
I don't, I don't tell them, I was just making a requirement, the homeowner to go to the property. That means that if anybody has a issue, wants to raise a rock wall or moving, you know, that they can't touch, it's somebody else's, okay? So under that, some people buy a house and they say, well, I wanna raise my rock wall because I got a pool, I don't wanna see, you know, I don't, I don't wanna see, I don't wanna, so they go to the neighborhood and say, well, I wanna raise the rock wall. Well, here, you're not gonna be able, you're just not, you're not gonna have that, okay? They're not paying for it, just don't wanna give out a way, six inches.
Mr. Terrazas, just to clarify, um, there are some recommendations from Planning and Zoning, what are the recommendations from the engineers?
They have been addressed already on the, on the plat that you have in front of you.
And everything from the engineers is fine with, with the development, uh, is presenting?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
The thing is that we haven't had the opportunity to read this because we just got it here tonight.
But remember, this is a preliminary, it's, it's gonna come back to you with all of, everything marked, but you just...
And we have reviewed the preliminary plat, uh, along with, uh, recommendations from the engineers, and yes, they have been addressed.
Do you have any more speakers?
No. No. Nobody, nobody else signed up.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Rodriguez? Go ahead, sir.
Uh, let me take the, let me take the...
I'm sorry, we can take the vote, um, motion to suspend. Rene Rodriguez is absent, Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Yes.
Ivan Colombia loves. Yes. Go ahead, sir.
Councilmen and ladies, I don't know what to, how to, how to state, my name is Jack Martin. This issue has been going on for a few months now. We're still with one entrance, he said three, that he wants to be confiscated for, or paid for one, one more by Mr., what's his name? Raise your hand. Hector, I'm nervous. But here's the issue. The last time we talked, I thought there was an agreement. We gave up, or were willing to give up, an easement of fifteen feet that we use dirt easement for, for the project to, so that we can get in and out property, okay? He gave up one foot. It had nothing to do about ownership of a rock wall. He gave us one foot, we gave him fifteen feet of our property to come to an agreement, okay? My suggestion was to get those utilities where he said all the way in and kinda make a little cul-de-sac on each one to get us in and out. That was a long time ago, that was me. But we have been here for four months, and honestly, sir, you are sitting here telling stories. Yes, and it is wrong to be doing that to us. It's okay, and if he says he doesn't have to do it, you don't have to give him the permission to do that either. We were asking for, he, he had a, a picture right now, a real simple little road between one entrance to the other, a simple one that we could share, and we're willing to give up our land to do that. Nope, it's not gonna come true. And I want you guys also to know, not because I wanna be a finger or anything like that, but this young man right here, what's your name? He has very little worked with us, only what this man has said. He wants to cut our properties, nobody's buying our properties, they're not offering nobody no money. So when they come and say, hey, I wanna buy your property, that's another issue. All we want is to be unlandlocked and an opportunity to get some utilities. We offered fifteen feet, he offered one foot. That's just to make it legal and say he is helping out, one foot, okay?
That's one shoe.
My shoe is eleven inches long. We offered the fifteen feet easement that's already there. So I hope you guys can understand, and I think it's going way over since day one, and I appreciate some of y'all to be listening to us still. But I think you guys know your, what needs to be done. And with that, I wanna thank you, and the community wants to thank you, because you do know the right thing. Get us unlandlocked. Thank you.
I have to suspend the rules again.
Do we need to suspend the rules again?
Yeah, two.
Okay.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia loves. Yes.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna say two things. One, I don't think it's fair that you're allowing the, the developer to talk freely, freely newly, when you weren't letting the residents talk. I get it, you let the man talk, that's great. But you let this man talk a lot more. You didn't give him three minutes, you let him talk for as long as he wanted to. I just think it would be fair that you let the residents do the exact same thing. That's just observation. The second thing is, um, it seems like city council and the city staff aren't in the same place as how, as how they're looking at what the city should look at. And I think that's important, right? We want parks, I want parks. I sent a letter to Planning and Zoning Commission about parks because they were trying to take away the one that was getting built in Cielo del Mar. Parks are needed, parks are important, parks need to be in Socorro. Staff needs to know that that's what city council is looking for and wanting for in, for the future to come. I think the, the problem is, Mr. Developer said, well, I met with city staff, so I did what city staff told me. And now we're getting here and he's getting attacked, you know, by, by city council... And now we're getting here and he's getting attacked, you know, by, by city council, but that's because we weren't in the same level, we weren't communicating, we weren't talking to each other. The whole pet dog park and whatever he was talking about, that sounds nice, I wanna see where that is. And the third thing I'll, and I'll, and that, that should happen, the third thing I'll say, whatever you guys get extra at the meetings, I wanna see that too, because I don't get to see it. It's not in the city council agenda. Does it get included in the minutes? I don't know. But I'd like to see, you get to see it, I wanna see it. We should all be able to see it. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Duran?
As far as what we get, it is online, you can go to the city website, and it does come up on backup.
It will be included in the minutes.
That was, yeah, that, but...
It will be included in the minutes.
Yeah, it'll be included in the minutes, but we didn't see it either, same as you didn't. I think we, the subdivision has to happen. Number one, because it was, the preliminary was approved. Alls we have to do is get to the fine details of how it's gonna happen. With regards to stub outs, with regards to rock wall fences, and regards to parks. Uh, I, I've only been on city council two and a half months. I wasn't here. I am very, very adamant about quality of life for the people of Socorro. Quality of life to me means a park where they can go and walk. You say you have a dog park too, planned. Okay, you have a dog park but no people park. I find that a little ironic, I, I know, it's just, I'm just being facetious there. Okay? Um, with regards to you bringing up about an attorney, according to what I read, it's up to us whether you give us the two point five percent or we get a park. We can vote on that. With regards to, um, the rock wall, I, I, I do happen to agree that it is, and I, I've seen that with, when I was on Board of Adjustments, people put a rock wall in the wrong place. It is, it does belong to both people. So they will be getting a rock wall basically for free because you're gonna be putting it up. And I understand that. But these stub outs, they do need access to their property. Not because of, um, what's legal, because I guess legally you don't have to supply any of that. It's called being a good neighbor. They need to have access to their property, their landlock. Nothing we can do about that. That's just the way the cookie crumbles. But being a good neighbor means giving them access to their property. With regards to utilities, water and sewer, we don't have any control over that. That's the Lower Valley Water District. It'll be right there, and I'm sure, hopefully, they will find a way to get those services to everybody there. Now, with regards to parks, um, I don't see how we can, how I can in good conscience approve the way this is right now. So just so we can get things moving, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Where's the other?
An amended one?
Amended?
A motion to amend.
Okay, a motion to amend. Okay, well, papers I got are not on there. We're gonna make that, we'll, we'll, we'll get to that. Now, my amendment, or my motion is to approve the preliminary plat for East Lake Village subdivision being a portion of track date, block fifteen Socorro grant, with the stipulations of the, um, um... The engineers, plus the fa, plus there to include city parks.
Uh, just to make sure the motion's clear, with the recommendations from the...
Engineers, from CEA group.
It's, um, no, that's it.
No?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, to include, include the six-foot-high rock wall required adjacent to the irrigation laterals and ditches should be provided by the developer. Identify, do I need to read all that? Or can I just put rec?
No, you can reference them, you don't have to read them.
Okay, might as well refer them.
Is that the review letter, is that considered the review letter?
Yes.
East Lake subdivision response.
Those are the comments that the engineer gave, and what you got today is the response from them to the comments of the engineers that was on the email that was provided on your back.
Okay, so then I amend my, uh, motion to, um, have the, the recommendations from, um, Danenbaum. Is that who was that from? Yes?
Yeah.
From Danenbaum, plus, um, a plan for city parks.
Instead of the fee? The parks instead of...
Second.
Yes, parks instead of the fee. Plus the recommendations from Planning and Zoning, minus the rock wall, because that one is not gonna be there, no? No? They're contradictory, okay?
Um, point, I'm sorry, point of order, uh, um, Madam Mayor. Um, the conditions, uh, posed, posed by P N Z are different than what's the, than what's attached to the comments for the, from the engineer. So that's two different designs. No, sir, the other one that you got today, correct. The attachment to that, the, the, the actual plat itself, that, it's different than what the recommendations are from the P N Z.
Which is what I was talking about.
So, exactly, so which, which one, we need clarification, that's exactly which one it is that you are recommending approval for, or, uh, approving, excuse me.
These are just, these are just responses to questions, correct?
To the comments that were made by our engineers.
Okay.
So, once the comments were made, they get the modifications to the flats, and that's what they're saying with the comments.
Correct.
Okay, so we're going to go with the recommendations from Danenbaum? Is that what everybody is agreeing to?
Which is the one that you have, item number six, and it's a...
Yeah.
Right, which includes the map that's attached to the comments behind, that is correct.
This is what, this is what was recommended.
Because they still have to bring it back for a final?
That is correct.
Okay. So in case there are some changes that have to be made, we can make it on the final, okay?
It's the one he's talking about right now.
With all due respect, I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. With all due respect, um, if we, if we approve this a hundred percent the way it is, then we are risking that we are, that, um, these two, uh, add-ons and this removal will not happen. And this is what we've been talking about here. They have two exits, and they removed one.
No, uh, what you're approving today, um, the way the motion is written, is the one that you received today. You're approving it with all the, all the conditions that Planning and Zoning is making, plus what the comments at the engineer did. That's pretty much what, Mr. Duran, I think.
Thank you for the clarification. Second, from Danenbaum.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
I'm sorry, um, I'm looking at the map, I'm looking at the subdivision. And... I'm gonna vote no, no.
This is not easy, it is not easy. We are, we really are trying to do the best for everybody and the city, but mostly our, our constituents. Um, we are hearing you loud and clear, and, um, I'm not comfortable, I'm not comfortable. You know, I'm not comfortable saying no, I'm not comfortable saying yes. So, um, I'm just not gonna, I'm just gonna abstain from voting tonight.
She's abstaining from her vote, but she's part of the motion. Is that, is that why she can abstain?
She's seconded the motion.
She's seconded the motion.
So, ma, must I say yes, since I, since I seconded?
Don't know the answer, but...
I would, um, I would suspect, I would sus- suspect that the motion doesn't predicate a vote.
Okay.
That is correct.
I guess.
So she can vote however she wants.
Or you can abstain.
What you, whatever you put up, it should say.
And you become a tiebreaker, so does that have a meaning?
Madam Mayor becomes a tiebreaker. How many, how many said yes?
It's only a two, it's only a two, three.
No.
Yeah, it's two to one.
Okay. Absent, yes, yes, no, a two.
So there is no tiebreaker, so, right, it wouldn't affect it one way or the other.
It's approved, it's approved, alright.
Will it approve?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, let's take off.
That you will do the right thing, sir.
They approve this with the city engineers' comments, plus the Planning and Zoning's recommendations.
With a parking, with a...
Mr. Escalante?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we've already voted on it. That won't touch, I mean, it's...
It's not.
It's still in there, yeah.
Excellent.
It's all we really want.
Yes. It's phenomenal.
Thank you, sir. Just no bar, thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Reyes?
Just to let you know, sir, that's what all we ever wanted, was a fair deal for both you and for the constituents. That's all we've ever asked for. That's all we've ever asked for, sir, is a fair deal for you and for them, so we can come to an agreement. That's all we've ever wanted, and, and it's, it, we've gone through valleys and highs and lows just to get to this point. Uh, we will have staff get in touch with you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen, discussion and action on the proposed conditional use permit for a repair and maintenance shop located at ten thousand sixty-four Alameda Avenue, tracks two B and three A, block fifteen and track one, block sixteen Socorro Grant.
Which are we on? Make a, um, make a motion for discussion. Make a motion for discussion?
Second.
Discussion and action from seventeen.
Discussion.
To approve or to dis- discussion?
To approve, right, to...
All right, uh, next case, ladies and gentlemen, is, uh, is your consideration to take action on the proposed conditional use permit uh, for a property located at, uh, uh, one zero zero sixty-four Alameda Avenue. Uh, the special use permit is for, essentially for them to, to allow them to have a, a minor repairs, a maintenance uh, shop, if you will, for their vehicles on shop, on, onsite. Uh, currently, um, they do not have one, uh, on their, on their property. Uh, they do need a, a conditional use permit in order for them to have this kinda small maintenance shop for their vehicles. It's not a commercial maintenance shop, if you will, it is just for their own vehicles for, um, changing or topping off fluids, wiper fluids, tire, changing tires and so forth like that. Uh, that's what the conditional use permit is for.
Mr. Perez?
Sir, we're talking about the maintenance facility? Or what are we talking?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, so it's for them?
That is correct, it's for their, their own personal vehicles on their campus, correct.
Mr. Reyes?
Uh, sir, uh, how are we going to prejudge that they're not going to do massive or extensive repairs? Do they have another shop located somewhere else for them to do that type of maintenance? Or is it the only maintenance that they're gonna have?
Madam Mayor, Representative Reyes, they did provide a, a letter stating they do have a, um, another larger area where they actually do extensive maintenance, uh, on another site. Again, all they're do, uh, their, the letter, uh, states that all they're really, excuse me, all that they would be doing on site, excuse me, trying to find it where we could actually get the quote here, um, uh, there are major repairs will not be done on the premises, it'll be performed through our contractor with Forest Tires, uh, located in Central Paso. So all they're doing is minor, uh, repairs on their, on, on their vehicles onsite. A garage, if you will.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number twenty, discussion and action on calling a regular city council meeting for December pursuant to section three point oh seven.
There.
Mr. Reyes?
Yeah, for December, yes, I know it's for December.
Because we always fall into the twentieth.
I would say that's the first Tuesday in December, so that everybody else would want to be and make plans if they have the month.
I'm sorry, can, can you repeat that, please?
No, Tuesday. This way we just get it out of the way, because it's on... Yes. And that way we have the entire month in order for anybody that's gonna go on vacation, they can go ahead, come finally in.
Don't we have other meetings?
Excuse me?
Don't we have other meetings that day?
No, we don't, and, yeah, according to the co, according to city charter, we have to schedule one meeting in December at our discretion. And the, I'm saying Tuesday, which would be the earliest possible day in December, which frees up the rest of the month for anybody who would like to extend vacation, have family or whatever else, and they don't have to worry about coming in between.
Planning and zoning, don't they have a meeting that day? There's no other, chambers will not be utilized for anything else that day?
They use the court, they do use the court when we have chambers.
Thank you.
Mr. Duran?
Um, I think we should just have it on the first Thursday. I don't think two days, I don't know if anybody takes three weeks off for Christmas. Well, I guess when you're retired you do, but I'm...
Take the whole month.
Yeah, well, we're, we're not retired, we don't take that much. And I think because of the fact that people are used to coming here on Thursday, the four of them that are here still. Okay, there's no, with the one that's here, still, still here.
That's the mentality we have to change.
Of course, that is. Yeah, we should have put everything before, and then the last things last. But I think we should just leave it on the first Thursday in December. What do you, what does everybody else think?
No, that's at the fifth, I need the whole month.
Night's more than...
Mr. Perez?
No, there's no, there's no second?
No.
Oh.
What was the motion, which motion were we discussing? Can I ask, uh, let me ask a que, is there a reason? Do you have a reason?
No, I just figured it gives everybody else a chance now to plan for their month, because family comes in, they don't have the same time off with the school as we do here. Uh, family would like to make arrangements. You don't want somebody just to show up, to show up, so it gives you enough time for everything that you need to do. Or if you wanna go out of town, you can go. Not worry about having a, a, a meeting.
But we're only talking about...
Two days.
Two days. Those are, two days is two days. What's the difference, it's two days, two days.
I, I, for me, it, I'm a very, I'm a very linear, I need the consistency.
You need a structure?
I need the structure, I'd rather have it on the...
Two days is gonna throw you out of... Two days is gonna throw you out of your structure?
You, believe it or not, it will.
Have to agree with Mr. Perez.
Plus, we're, we're gonna have a meeting, um, November, or, are we gonna skip a meeting, uh, November?
Sixteenth is your next meeting? And then the next schedule based on the first and third would be your December seventh.
We only have one in December.
In November.
In November, we just have the one at the second meeting of the month.
So in December you only have one meeting? And she's proposing it for, to be December fifth? However, your regular meeting would have taken place December seventh?
I'm for just keeping it on the seventh.
Well, we don't have a second.
Vote.
We don't have a second.
I'll make a motion to keep it on the seventh, which is the first Thursday of the month.
Second.
I don't care. I'd be here.
No.
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Oh, my God, yes. Oh, you had a trip, I, that's why I asked you, why did, it, it doesn't matter, time, time off for family, for whoever, come again, wherever you wanna go.
Item number twenty-one, discussion and action on railroad crossing upgrades in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and seven with fifty-three cents.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, sorry.
For discussion?
For discussion.
Do we have a second?
Was, was one?
Motion to dis- for discussion.
One more time.
Wait.
Oh, you did?
Second?
Second.
Attorney Mayor and council members, so we were approached by, uh, a railroad earlier in the year, and they came up with a, they're doing a nationwide, uh, survey to, uh, make more safe, uh, railroad crossings. Uh, there's two crossings that were, um, selected in the city of Socorro, which are Nevares Road and, uh, the one at Rio Vista, that they were, uh, recommending to upgrade. Some of the upgrades, as you can see in your packet, include on the Rio Vista, were to add a physical median, to do some striping, as well as to connect the portion of sidewalk that's missing right there close to Sanchez Middle School, which will be later on the idea of new school. And I've gotten more or less a proposal of what that will cost to get done. Uh, so right now, we've been in talks with the railroad, and they have agreed to do, uh, fifty percent of the charge. That's why we're, uh, coming up to you with a eight thousand dollar figure. The, the full figure is sixteen thousand eight hundred, uh, and these are for the recommendations that were made by them. The, the most costly is the one in Rio Vista, due to the fact that a lot of people, when their arms are down, cross without, uh, you know, looking that there might be something coming their way. So the physical median is the actual high cost of the assistance, which will include those, uh, uh, ballards that are stuck to the floor for two hundred feet on each direction, as long with the railroad crossings on the road, and as well as connecting the more or less a hundred lineal feet of sidewalk to connect near the tracks. Mind that we will provide the work and obviously our part of the material, but we will build to their specs. Uh, on the road on Nevares, due to the height of the actual crossing, all that was requested was the median lines, the railroad crossing signs on the pavement, and the low clearance signs that were required by the railroad, uh, uh, division here, uh, in Texas. So, I mean, these are the costs, you can see the actual cost of the material, they're in your backup, to, and the actual quantities needed to let these things done. So, I mean, th- this is where we're at. I don't know if you have any, any questions? Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, did I hear you say that the actual cost is over sixteen thousand dollars and not eight thousand?
No, it's sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifteen, the railroad is saying that they will cover fifty percent of the cost. So the city's per- portion would only be eight thousand.
Ah, okay.
So it's fifty-fifty, pretty much. And this is just following, as you can see in the, in the bottom, uh, in the backup, you'll have two, uh, two pictures, and the, the has, they have numbering, and all the numbering describes the actual recommendations to create and make these, uh, crossings a lot safer, both for pedestrians and for, uh, vehicles.
And normally they pay fifty percent or, um-
Correct, that, that's one of the questions that I asked, I said, number one, do we have an agreement that the city? But he stated to me that the cities always, uh, do the enhancements, like the upgrades, and the railroad says, what cost do you need us to, to help you with? They're the ones that do, do the assessments, and however, we are gonna want that fifty percent. I am gonna have to come back with an agreement from the Union Pacific, and at that point, I'll have a representative present to you all.
Mr. Reyes?
No, my question is going to be, is that who's going to maintain this upgrade?
Uh, well, the city has to maintain it, I mean, the, uh, from the time that I've been here, we haven't had this, uh, come up, so we will need to find out exactly how out, I mean, remember the codes for the railroad do change, so certain things after a while might be out of code. So we will have to find out exactly when those revisions come up, and to see for the recur- uh, recurring cost that the city will have to take. These are just like the issue we have with the WID, we are in charge of maintaining anything that crosses our roads, or like they see it, our roads that cross their canals. So it's the same way with the railroad. And, um, they're real stringent on, on all their, uh, codes and, uh, anything that has to be for upgrade. So we will have to look into what it's gonna be a cost for the city in the future. Whether it be maintaining the signs, the markings, the medians, and, and things of that nature.
You will bring that, uh, information to us once you have that?
I'm sorry? You can't, you-
Jeez, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Are we there yet? You're going to bring us back information regarding this as far as-
Correct, in order for us to move forward and for them to pay fifty percent, there has to be an agreement. Okay, so, I brought this to council to see if it was something that we all wanted to do in order for me to go back and say, yes, we'll go into an agreement. I'm still requesting, like, where is this required? Where does it say that the city is liable to take care of these upgrades and, and however, I didn't wanna say, no, we won't cover it, 'cause that's council's decision. However, um, they're saying that they would cover fifty percent of the cost. But I'm still waiting for information from them, and they, he said that they had to have an agreement if they were going to assist with the fifty percent. That agreement still has to come through council for your approval.
Are there, are, are there gonna be other, um, railroad crossings that are going to come back and, did they, did they express we have others?
Well, we have others, but these were the only ones that we came in for recommendations. I mean, we have the one on Bowman and Middle Drain, and, you know, the one in Anderson is not ours, so it'd probably be the, the one on, uh, Bowman and Middle Drain to be, which I'm guessing at some point it might have to follow code, but it wasn't addressed this time.
And, and we need to vote now because there's a deadline, or?
Well, they wanted to know, in order for them to do, do a contract, I would need a response from the city. And this is, the Union Pacific is doing a cross, uh, crossing assessment program throughout their whole, uh, region. So these are the two crossings that were identified that need upgrades for safety. One of them is, uh, to the school, and your backup gives you all of that information. But these are the two that were recommended, and it, they, they specifically say what recommendations are done. However, the one on Rio, uh, Rio Vista-
Yes, sir.
We're talking about expanding the bridge, and we're also right now viewing if we put a median there and future expansion that could affect the area, but, I mean, we're still looking at those options for future expansion. This item is just, are you in favor of it or not in favor, but we're not signing any contracts? That will still come back to you all with a final design and all that.
If you have all the information that you're going to need in order to make that presentation, then it would, then it's up to either approve and give you the authority or your representative to sign the-
Contract, exactly. And once the contract's sent to me, it automatically goes to the, um, attorney for their review.
Make a motion to approve.
No, no, a motion to-
Already made?
Amen.
Yeah, we had.
Motion to amend.
She made it. I seconded it, yeah, okay. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Yes.
Eight twenty-seven, executive session.